And invite you all to stay after the meeting for some cake and ice cream. Go ahead and call the meeting. Stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, whose existence, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or revisions to the regular or consent agendas?
I would like to remove approval for Smith.
Item A.
Anything else? We'll entertain a motion to remove new business number A. Greg made a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded. All those in favor? Questions on the consent agenda or?
Not on the motion to approve.
Wes made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Lisa seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries.
If you can be a little louder. It's kind of hot here back here.
Sure.
Next up is student of the month. Mr. Gowen?
Okay, this is Parker Torlott. He is our April student of the month for second grade at Central Elementary. Parker actively participates in class lessons and accepts new challenges with a great attitude while always trying his best. He promptly completes his schoolwork every day and always puts forth his best efforts. Parker is kind, patient, thoughtful, and conscientious, humble, and well-liked by everyone. He is always willing to help other students while displaying good manners and kindness towards them. All these attributes will help Parker continue to be successful and a great student and friend. Parker is truly an asset to the second grade class at Central Elementary, and this is from his teacher, Mrs. Gertin, who is here tonight as well. Congratulations.
Okay, I have Emily Ellis, and she is a fifth grader at Fillmore in Mrs. McCamick's class. Dr. Smith and the South Putnam School Board members, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Emily Ellis, a fifth grader at Fillmore Elementary. She is the April student of the month. Emily is the daughter of Sam and Katie Ellis. She has a twin brother Evan and a younger sister Lizzie. Emily constantly demonstrates our school's core values of being respectful and sincere in her positive attitude towards her learning, her school responsibilities, and her relationship with peers and teachers. Emily is one of the hardest-working students. She takes time to think about what she is learning and asks questions when she needs clarification. Emily works diligently to complete every assignment given to her. She is organized and careful about her work. Emily's upbeat and charming personality adds brightness to our school days. She is a loyal friend and treats her peers and teachers with respect and kindness. She is a trustworthy, sincere individual who is well-liked by all. For all these reasons, I believe Emily deserves this honor for her actions, attitudes, and accomplishments. Emily is a great person and a wonderful role model for all of us at Fillmore Elementary School. And that was from her teacher, Jill McCamick.
All right. Brian and I decided to spice things up a little bit. So we have planned a dance, right? But since we weren't in school today, we didn't get a practice. So we're not going to do it, right? We agree. Okay. All right, Brian and I agree. All right. Brian is our middle school student of the month, and he was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Wells, and she had this to say. I would like to nominate Brian Bai as a student of the month. Brian is one of the kindest students I have ever had in class. He is considerate and thoughtful to his peers and courteous to his teachers and other adults. Brian is also always willing to participate in class, help his fellow classmates, and works hard to get good grades. Not only does Brian excel in academics, he is very involved with clubs and sports as well. He was an active member of the Spell Bowl team, and he works diligently on the middle school student council. He was also on the middle school cross-country team and is currently running track. You're a busy man. He is definitely going places, and it has been a privilege to get to know Brian this year. I look forward to the many wonderful things he will continue to do as a productive student of South Putnam. So Brian Bai is our middle school student of the month. Our high school student of the month is Vienna Burkhardt. She's not here this evening. Vienna, who is she nominated by?
Do you remember Mr. Scott? Who she was nominated by?
Mr. Eric. Okay, thanks. It's not on here. Vienna has been impressive all semester, exclamation point. She is one of the hardest workers I have in all of my classes. There has not been a minute that goes by in class that she is not working on her assignments. The effort has really elevated her grading chemistry. This past grading period, she finished with a perfect 100 percent. This was the highest in her class and one of the top three in all classes. I don't know how that's possible. She has started this grading period with a 95.7 and scored 100 on her last test, so she's definitely doing well. Vienna is always looking to improve her understanding of the content and perform at a high level. She will often seek suggestions on how to improve her lab reports and assignments. So Vienna Burkhardt, a sophomore, is our high school student of the month.
Thank you.
Do the school night thing, do you want or not? It's up to you. Let's keep going.
Next up is the financial update. Dr. Smith?
Real quick update. You had all the informations in your packets you received. Expenditures are online with our projections as our revenues, and all accounts are balanced up just to the penny as normal, so everything's running smooth there. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that today.
Thank you. Legislative update.
Okay, we have several bills that have passed. I'm going to try to just breeze through them. Touch on them. HEA 1251, which is a various education matters, that was passed. Noted in there. Creates adjunct teacher permits, but there are some provisos such as. Background check. The HEA 1093, which is the education matters. Trying to look for just some touch points on that. Amends memberships and duties for the early learning advisory committee. Changes some definitions on school resource officer. That's a big one. Open meetings. This one is HEA 1130, and that requires the school boards to reasonably provide public comment. Restricts the circumstances when the local board may hold virtual meetings during declared disaster emergency. SEA 2 is a various education matters that comes out of the Senate. Ensures that schools receive full funding for students who are in quarantine during 2122 school year. And then there's also a study in there for high school graduates. Okay. Also, SEA 83 is open meetings. Requires public comment to take place on a topic before the board takes final action on a topic. So let me repeat that. Requires public comment to take place on a topic before board can take final action. So open the comment, which is what we do. At that point, we can vote on that topic. Really, that's about it. The only one that's a hot button is HEA 1041, and that is prohibits males from, based on students' biological sex at birth, from participating in girls' sports. That was vetoed. It's likely it's going to be overridden, but then they believe there's going to be legislation on that as well, so. And that's about it.
Thanks for the update. Next up is new business.
Real quick, we're looking to purchase AED equipment and backpacks for recess at both elementary schools so that the AEDs are out at recess, so that if anything would happen out there, we have the AEDs available for staff and students. So just looking for approval of the purchase of two of those, including the backpacks, so that they're mobile and the teachers can take them out for recess.
Are any of these included in that or in that purchase?
That's a requirement to have a teacher's license to have that, so it's covered in that.
Is there any grant money or using any kind of grant money for those?
If I can find it, I will. If not, I'm just going to get them because we need them for a safety standpoint.
So go ahead.
To approve? Have a second? Lisa made a motion to approve the purchase of the AED. Greg seconded. All those in favor? Next up is consideration of out-of-state field trip requests.
There's two. We have a fifth grade annual field trip that they take on chartered buses. At the end of the year, they're going to be headed to St. Louis this year. And the second request is the use of our bus for after-pron field trip for those students who are going to, and they're going to go to King's Island in Ohio. And that is all paid for by that prom committee.
They pay one of our bus drivers?
Yeah, I believe that is correct. Brad, is that correct? Yes. So we have all the details on how it is, but yeah, it'll be paid one of our bus drivers driving that trip.
Is it one of us?
How many buses is it? Thanks, Brad.
Wes made a motion to approve the out-of-state field trips. Lisa seconded. All those in favor? All right. Next up is the reading of the corporation policies.
So this is the second reading of these policies. They came last month in March. They are addressing our Title IX and vacancy policies. And so we're just having the second reading, and then we'll, in item E, you're going to take action to approve those policies.
Do we have any? Consideration of adoption of corporation policies. Do I have a second? Lisa made a motion to approve policies 2266 and 3132. Wes seconded. All those in favor? Consideration of transfer request deadline date for out-of-district students for '22, '23.
Every year, we need to establish the dates at which we will accept students who are out of district. And our dates are going to be set basically by the state's ADM dates in the fall and the spring. So when the semester opens, we'll accept students through that ADM date in the fall, and then we will again open and then close it at that time, and then open it up again second semester until the ADM count there at the beginning of that second semester.
Motion to approve.
Wes made a motion to approve the request for the deadline for out-of-date district of students. Greg seconded. All those in favor? Consideration of Mosmatic undercarriage washer.
John Warren, can you speak to that real quick? Thank you.
So we are seeking approval to purchase the Mosmatic undercarriage washer for our buses. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's Mosmatic. I think you're right. It would work with our current Hotsi power washer that we use. But the way that we've done it in years past is we'll jack the bus up in the front, crawl underneath, hose it down, and then jack it up from the rear, crawl underneath and hose it down. Some of that would still need to be done, but this would eliminate the majority of that. So we're spending less time under the bus, so it's safer for the staff that's doing that. And then also, so that's preparing for bus inspection. Sorry, I didn't mention that part. But also, I think it would be beneficial in the winter to help wash off salt, things like that as well. And it has a tilt feature so that you can do the underside where you just push it underneath. It has a trigger on the hand wand, and then with the tilt features, you can do like the side of the bus or if you needed to get at an angle under the bus, or also for the wheels to wash from the rims.
Video was pretty impressive.
Good. I thought that would help explain it because just looking at the specs, it may not seem as beneficial. But yeah, they came out and did a demonstration.
Do you have a dollar amount in mind we need to approve?
Well, $27.50 is the quote that we got from Action. I did do some research on some others, and it looks like there's another vendor that has it for $2,500. So if you want to set a dollar amount for us to, for approval, otherwise, I would try to stay within that budget to not go over $27.50. The Action vendor that we got the $27.50 quote from is who we've had service our Hotsi equipment in the past. They're the ones that came out and did the demonstration. And I do, or I have asked for a price match since we did find another vendor for less. So that would be my goal is to maybe get that down. Go with that vendor, but maybe at the cheaper price.
Do you know anything about the other vendor? I know that the one you had, Action, is that what it's called?
Action, yes.
Also does Unicam.
Does what?
Services Unicam. I mean, that's where they get theirs from.
Okay, yes, that's right. Did you remember him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lasting.
It would be local. The other one that I checked with, they're out of Michigan. The original quoted price was lower than what the quote that I got through email because I contacted them to make sure that they had it stocked, which they didn't. But they can get it in a couple of business days directly from the factory. It's $2,590 is the quote.
You request the full amount of the higher quote, and you're going to try to work it under that if can.
Absolutely, yeah.
Motion to approve up to $27.50?
Up to the higher quote.
Second? Joe made a motion to approve the purchase of the undercarriage washer up to $27.50. Wes seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries. Consideration of updated kindergarten report card for the '22, '23 school year.
Yep, Debbie and Mr. Gowen, whoever are going to do.
Okay. So first of all, I want to commend Brandy Ames and Andrea Minor, who did all the work on this. Andrea is here. Doesn't want to stand up. But they, they took, I believe it was three half-days, and what you got in your packet was the completed work that they did. Mr. Gowen and I, Dr. Smith, he was in agreement with us. It was a much-needed improvement to our kindergarten report card, and we want to thank them for the work that they did on it. Mrs. Ames couldn't be here today. I'm just going to read a little bit of what she said, just to kind of give you a little background. She said, "Over the past several months, kindergarten teachers from Fillmore and Central Elementary have collaborated to update our kindergarten report card and other assessment tools. Our current report card is out-of-date and an ineffective tool for parents and teachers. Using state standards, examples from other corporations, parent and educator input, we have created a report card that we feel voids these gaps. The new report card gives parents an accurate picture of their child's strengths and needs. We created an accompanying parent guide that breaks down the components of the report card and explains how scores are given. The new report card will be useful for both kindergarten and first-grade teachers as they look to it to help inform instruction. In an effort to create uniformity across our district and other assessment tools, or the other assessment tools were created that will be used across all kindergarten classrooms. These tools include two separate midterm assessments that will be given at the end of the first and third quarters of the school year, and two separate report card assessments that will be given and used in scoring the report card at the end of the first and second semester. We are confident that the creation of this new report card and other assessment tools will help improve the education of our students. In the past, our kindergartners, they got a report card at the semester and then one at the end of the year. People who, you know, have students or have, you know, children that have been students here. This will put them in alignment with everyone else. Every quarter, they're going to get some sort of assessment, report card, or what have you also, so.
Looks like there's a lot more information in a timely manner to where you could assess rather than waiting till the end.
I personally liked the parent guide, having student, you know, kids who went through school and everything. I felt like that was very helpful because as a parent, then you knew what it was that they needed to work on, and you could help at home, and that could involve those parents in the education of their child.
Especially if you've got the kid who's on the bubble birthday wise, whether he really needed to stay there or move home.
So once again, I want to commend them for all their work. They took, they took the time. They, they just, you know, cranked it out there, and we were impressed with what they gave us. So we'd like for your approval so that we could start using it next school year.
So moved.
Well, I just wanted to let you all know that I had some questions. I really like the new format. I really like the one, two, three, four scoring. And, but I wanted to make sure the teachers were on the ground level of planning that. So I called and I talked to Brandy and, Brandy and Debbie too. And so anyway, I wanted to thank the teachers, the kindergarten teachers, who put all that work because I know that's mind-boggling to do that, and I just think you did such a great job of coming up with something that would be helpful, not only to teachers, you know, in the first grade, but also to parents. Anyway, I just thought it was a great document. And, and thank you Todd and Debbie and Mr. Smith for allowing the teachers release time to get that done because I think that was important work. So I would like to move to approve the kindergarten. Sorry, Wes.
Lisa made a motion to approve the consideration of the updated kindergarten report card. Greg seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is the consideration of acceptance of the EES 2023 budget and finance work proposal.
So as we continue to develop our programming here and our facilities and our processes, we want to make them as efficient and effective as possible through a continuous improvement. So we're going to do that through strategically maximizing our financial potential and minimizing all of our waste that we possibly can, basically squeezing every penny that we possibly can out of every dollar that we get. Therefore, I am recommending that we contract with Dr. Brandon Penrod via EES for our 2023 budget cycle and his financial analyst functions that he will provide. Dr. Penrod will assist us as we work to maintain our fiscal responsibilities and be compliant with our budgets in the ever-changing arena known as school finance. So he just brings a lot to the table. He's previous CFO of Warsaw Community Schools, where they ran $100 billion budgets, year in and year out. So I just recommend bringing him on to help us with, as we move forward in some of the things that we have in the future.
Do you foresee this, excuse me, again? Do you foresee this being an annual thing that you're contracting for, or is this just?
It'll be until we get things where we need them to be and we know we're, we're moving on a good path, especially as we move into some other things, bond issues and those things along the way. Then that'll be something that'll probably drop off as we go. So it's, this is an initial, making sure that as we move into our bond, like I said, like moving into our bond issues and as the state adjusts things, we want to make sure that we're in good shape as we move forward. So it's good to have an extra set of eyes who's been there on much bigger budgets than what we run.
And so will Dr. Penrod, he'll replace Baker and Tully, or we'll still need them every once in a while?
No, he will replace what Baker and Tully's been doing, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
How does this kind of coincide with our other conversations about EES? Is that, is this all part of that, say, package?
This is actually separate. This is completely separate, yeah. This is, this is basically taking a deep, like we're taking a deep dive in our learning. This is taking a deep dive in our finances, just to make sure we're getting it.
So there's no crossover between these two at all as far as, you know, we did talk a little bit about.
No, there's no crossover. They're two separate sections. So he's always functioning on our finances and our data analytics from the financial side.
My question is, one is not contingent upon the other?
Correct, yes, yes.
But is this EES the same?
It's the same company, yes. It's the same company. But no, they're totally separate divisions of the company.
And we met, I think we met.
You did.
Yeah, that's right.
You have a motion to approve? Further, any other further discussion?
So moved.
Wes made a motion to approve the EES 2023 budget and finance work proposal. Joe seconded. All those in favor? Carries. All right. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, so just a few items I'll go through real quickly here. The learning prioritization plan is underway. We've had teams in here over the last week and a half and last two weeks. And we're getting that data coming back, and things are looking great. We have a lot of things, a lot of strengths we're going to be building on here at South. So I'm excited what we're, the initial returns on that so far. It was a great experience having their professional team in here and getting the information that we need to build on. From that, there'll be some learning prioritization plan surveys coming out. Some people have already received them, teachers and some staff members. Parents are going to be getting a survey as well as are all staff members within the district. So those parents will be looking for those. They'll be, they'll be coming your way via your email. And we'll need those returned in about the next week. The construction project is now in Patterson Horst, who is our general contractor's, Ann's. And we will be doing walkthroughs next week to get set up for the construction projects to begin as soon as students are out of the building. And then our 2022, '23 calendar, I just wanted to bring your attention to this. Based on some of the legislative changes, we will have to revisit our '22, '23 calendar. So look for that in our May board meeting in having to make some changes because of those legislative changes that came that will go into effect July 1, so that will affect our calendar for next year. So just be anticipating that. There shouldn't be any major changes to vacations, though. So like the major fall break and winter break and spring break, there shouldn't be any major changes to that, but there may be some other changes some of the other days. And then last but not least is the famous water main break issue from last night. So we did not anticipate that, and last evening we had a, an entire full crammed gym in Central Elementary, ready for a math bowl, ready to take off. We had a baseball game, and we had a track meet, and we lost water 10 minutes before those were going to start. So it was a great team effort, the administrative team, our maintenance department, all worked together to push us through that. We were able to get, our maintenance director was able to talk with someone and have porta-potties delivered for the math event within 45 minutes after closing hours. I was, it was amazing. I mean, it's taken me longer to get pizza sometimes than that. So it was great that, and I had, there was at least 60 or 70 people who used those restaurants as soon as we brought them in, so that was great. But anyway, as of right now, we have water here at our main campus, so we will be back in school tomorrow. I sent out the message earlier tonight. We will be on a boil alert. We will be on a boil alert, though, here at Central, or here at the middle school and high school and at Central Elementary, until we get the all-clear from those who do the test. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on all that.
All right, thank you.
Real quick question. On the school calendar, what's the, what's the, what's changing? What do you see?
The biggest are the e-learning days and the amount of e-learning days that a school corporation can have. And so we're actually waiting on guidance right now from the DOE. It was supposed to come out last Friday, did not, so we're waiting on that to come out. And I have some superintendent meetings that are, to get some more information on that as well. And so combining that with the DOEs, then I'll be able to put together, work through a new calendar that will make sure we implement those, those new guidelines from the DOE, based on the legislation that was passed.
Something about only three, you can only have three days that didn't meet that criteria, you know, three e-learning days that didn't meet that criteria, but you're saying they're not real clear.
There's new criteria that even determines what an e-learning day looks like. So that'll all be fully explained at the next meeting, once we get guidance from them, because right now, they're trying to figure out what that, they're interpreting the legislation as well.
I have a question. On the construction projects, I mean, I know we're planning on starting as soon as all the kids are out, but what happens with all the summer camps? You know, like the basketball teams and the swim team and the baseball teams and all of those.
It's a great question. Mr. Yole, can you help inform us on this? Because I know you've been doing a lot of the legwork on that.
Sure. It'll be a challenge. That's the answer. We'll coordinate with Mr. Gallin of the Central, and the Central Gym will probably rock and roll from right early in the morning till late at night, trying to cram everybody in there. We're not sure yet on, and some of that may change. We may be able to be in our gym for a few weeks. We don't know until Patterson Horst has a walkthrough next Wednesday with us, evening after school. And some of that'll be as far as shipping and timelines for them to get material, because they won't just start demoing things if they can't touch them and start working on them for, you know, two months or something. So they may very well tell us we can use our gym, or we can use the pool, or we can, you know, but the big thing is obviously the restrooms have a hard deadline of August 1, so that we obviously can be back and have school. And so I foresee, and again, this is just, I guess, a common sense thought, is they're probably shutting water off through our whole building because they're going to demo those restrooms pretty quick. And if that's the case, it's going to be pretty tough to have any general public in the building with no running water, just like today.
So, but are your coaches going ahead and planning in case, or...
Oh, yeah, we're going to plan and still have stuff. It's just where we'll be located.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Our next regular board meeting will be next, next month on Wednesday, May 11th, at 7:00 PM in this building right here, South Putnam Middle School High School Learning Center. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wes made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Greg seconded. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. And please...